January 12th, 2023 Board of Supervisors Meeting to Order. This is the organizational meeting. It's my privilege to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is the invocation Pastor Spencer of Melrose United Methodist Church.
Will you all just join me in a quick prayer? Eternal God, we just thank you for this chance to gather as a community to set aside our differences and look towards our future. Please bless all the members of this council with integrity, with hope, with encouragement, and with plans for our future. Please make them plans for your want and fruition for this community to prosper and to heal and hope. It's in your son's holy and sacred name we pray. Amen.
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 Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Leaders.
The Pledge of Leaders. To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move into the organizational phase of the meeting. First item is the election of chairman. I'll open the floor for any nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Tom Tom Chairman.
Have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Richard Haney.
Any other nominations?
I move that we close.
Is there a second to close the nominations?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we'll take the first nominee, Mr. Tomlin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is that two or?
Two.
Two, okay. All those opposed?
Would you ask for them?
All those opposed, four.
Aye.
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 Great. All right, next nominee is Mr. Haney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye. I'm not opposed, but I think it's since we did whatever, I'll vote nay, just to be consistent.
All right. Mr. Haney, I'll, since you have majority of the vote, I'll pass that over to you as chair.
All right, I thank y'all gentlemen. All right, our next item would be the election of a vice chair. Have any nominations?
I'll nominate Ronnie.
All right, anyone else?
We just said yeah.
I'll nominate Ronnie.
All right, any other nominations? If not, close the nominations. All those in, all those in favor of Ronnie Jett being vice chair?
Need to close nominations first.
Yeah. You got to close them first.
I thought I, I thought I did.
No.
All right. I need a motion to close nominations, what I need, I'm sorry.
So moved.
All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Now, I have a motion for Ronnie Jett to be vice chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right, there you go, Mr. Jett. All right, next item would be the approval of the, of the adoption of the bylaws. Are there any changes, additions, anything to the bylaws? If there are none, I will accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve. All right. Are there any other comments on the bylaws? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, next item would be schedule of the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting dates. I guess everyone's had time to look at the dates. Any changes you need? All right, I will accept the motion to approve the meeting dates.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Next item is 2023 holiday, holidays for county offices. Any changes or deletions to that?
Um, D sum for the 22nd. I believe it's beginning of the Christmas holiday, close at noon. I'd like to see it just be closed the whole day. Is that going to be a productive day? They come in and work four hours.
Yeah. People pay tax, a whole lot of things.
But that's, just putting it up there.
All right, what's the opinion of the board?
Well, these, we follow unless we add, like what Mr. Brand is suggesting, we follow the state holiday.
That's what it is, make it that and you can jump from the state.
Yeah.
Could've been a conflict.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move that we keep it the same way.
Aye. Aye, second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, next item would be the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, deletions to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Next would be approval of the minutes. And we have a D sum of the 8th, 2022 meeting, and a D seven, 15th, uh, meeting, a special meeting. Any changes or additions to those minutes?
I would approve both of them, man.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second? All right, got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next item would be our presentations. We have a resolution for Mr. Joe Joseph A. Slater. And Drew, I'll let you take care of that.
A resolution honoring Joseph A. Slater. Whereas Mr. Joseph Slater has dedicated over eight years of public service to Northumberland County by serving on the Electoral Board, and whereas Mr. Joseph Slater demonstrated great leadership and commitment to the county and its citizens by always going above and beyond his call of duty, and whereas the same Mr. Slater served as Secretary of the Electoral Board, and whereas Mr. Slater was faithful, hands-on board member, and an active volunteer who would be greatly missed for his dedication and willingness to serve his community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude for his service to the county and its citizens in which it send much happiness and good health in the future, be it further resolved that this resolution is hereby adopted on this day, January 12th, 2023.
All right, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
I have something to say.
All right.
Uh, one, I want to thank Mr. Slater for his service, uh, on the Electoral Board because during his term and also any other term with Kathy as registrar, I have had no questions about the free, fair, and openness of elections in Northumberland County.
I second.
Yeah. Yeah, he's done an excellent job.
Also, Joe, this I've read that the first line kind of threw me off, eight years of service, but what a lot of people might not know, I don't know how many years, but many, many hours with the volunteer rescue squad serving the people of this county. I don't know how many years you had in, but I know it was a lot of hours for each year. I want to thank you for that, too.
Well, not as many as he had serving this country in the military. Thank him for that service. You've been a public servant from your entire life, Joe, thank you.
Yep. All right, we got a motion on the floor.
Yep.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Slater?
I'd like to thank you, too, for all your service, military, rescue squad, electoral board, and a great asset. H.C., you go.
I'll be here any moment.
All right, that's good.
Kathy.
If I could, a lot of people whose names ought to be on this.
Barry, you and Kathy want to come up for a picture with him? Come on up here.
When, uh, when you go in to vote, we have five precincts in this county, and all that stuff that's in the precinct where you go to vote, that's a get set up by itself. We have a trailer that sits behind this building, and it's got our voting booths and signs and all that in there. And, you know, election's on Tuesday, and so every Monday morning at 7:30, Mr. Curtis Aldright hauls that trailer out, and he goes up and down the roads of the county with us and sets up polling places. And then on Wednesday after the election's over, we reverse the process, and I want to thank Curtis very much for his service. There's another 50 or 60 folks that I see we got one and two of them here tonight. They're the officers of election. They're the folks that when you go in to vote, they check you in, they provide you with a ballot, answer your questions. These folks are not professional election workers, they are volunteers. They're your neighbors and, and your friends from around the county. They, they go through most of the day of trading, they have to show up at the precinct at 5:00 in the morning, even when the polls told they've got another two or three hours worth of work to do to make all the reports together and put everything together. So I want to very much thank all those officers of election. Um, we've got, let's see, Ms. Mary Kocke over here, who was the chairman of the Electoral Board for several years, and I want to thank Mary for her leadership, and two members of the current Electoral Board, Colonel Austin Schmidt and Mr. Bob Heller, and they have the Electoral Board in very good hands. And I think most important of all is the general registrar and director of elections for this county, is Catherine Davenport. She's been a registrar years, and there's 133 registrars in this state, and a lot of them call Kathy for help, so we are fortunate to have her. Kathy's, Kathy's taken the notice.
Fantastic.
And the supervisor, I want to thank you very much.
I want to thank you, too. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
And the other thing is Joe may have, may not, may or may not want it to go off, but with the change in the gubernatorial partisanship, that changes the makeup of our Electoral Board. They may have been agreeing between the existing members for him to leave, but again, thank you, Joe, for all your service. Service says, let's be plural.
All right, next item would be a resolution for the cultural icon Northern Neck Ginger Ale. Ms. Tadlock?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. We have a request to, for the board to consider the resolution of support for the Save the Northern Neck Ginger Ale group dedicated to saving the Northern Neck Cultural Icon. No one from the, the group was able to make it tonight as they, they're out with other board meetings and, and different things, but they did ask that the board consider this.
Do they have an actual, you've got a, have you done a resolution?
The, the draft resolution is in, in your board documents.
Right. Yeah. Correct. Yep.
All right, what's your pleasure to the board?
I move that we approve this resolution. Yeah, second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item would be a, is update from the Virginia Department of Transportation, and I think Todd Landingham is here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening, Todd.
Uh, just a few things, um, David wanted me to pass on to y'all, uh, the pipe replacement down at Moon Glow, I think they finished it today, um, so hopefully that, that'll be, that's complete, and then the permits and the right of entry for the pipe replacement at 200 down at Bama Radical Church is being worked on as we speak, and, um, that should be coming up soon. Also, they are doing some scouring work down on 605, um, in Balls Neck area, that road is closed, uh, in that, right there, the bridge, little bridge there, um, they working on that, and the next one will be up here on Indian Valley. Um, he said probably before our next meeting, they should be working on that one. And they also have one on Bushmills Road to, to also complete. Um, other than that, uh, we've got, all our contractors are signed up this year for snow. Um, we've got the same, about the same amount that we had for last year, so, um, there, that's all complete and all, everybody's done for that. Um, and David wanted to say a special thank you to the Smith Point C Rescue, I don't know if anybody's here tonight from there, but, um, back during the Christmas holiday, the, the ferry, the day we had all that wind, the ferry got blowed up on shore down there at the Sunny Bank, and, uh, then the, when the, then when the tide went out, and all the water went out, and the, and the ferry was stuck up on the shore. So, um, we ended up calling Smith Point C Rescue to come down there to pull it off ashore, and, um, you know, they came right on soon as we called, and also David wanted to say a special thank you to them for helping us out on that. On that, that's all I have for tonight, unless y'all have anything.
Run off 609, Todd. I, I don't know if we paid the care of that. It was a speed limit sign in the ditch.
Right there in ditch, yeah, I think they took care of that. Yeah.
That's all I have.
All right.
I got, I got several. Uh, I don't know if Ms. Tadlock got it today, but whoever, there's two of your VDOT route numbers down. The one on, uh, Remo Road and the one going into Harmy Hills that was pulled up. And then there's another one that's been pulled up off of Sandy Point, like going into Crane's Creek Harbor. They both came up the same night near, uh, New Year's Eve. They don't, they're not damaged, just looks like somebody just pulled them, either the whole base or it's laying on the ground right beside the road. There's a pothole, uh, on Sandy Point Road before you get to Shilango Drive. Uh, there's two on Mill Point Road, which is off of, uh, Remo Road, and there's one on Pebble. I've been advised by constituent of that. And you're doing that scour on 60, I mean, 605. Are they going to put signage on Cross Hills Road, 679, on, right there in Waikamaa Church, and then on the gravel side? Because if somebody turns on 679, Cross Hills Road, right Waikamaa Church, you've got a mile, mile and a half before you get to any possible signage.
Yeah, I know so that the only, the only sign they have is in the bottom before you get to that.
And that's not fair, somebody going all the way down there. And if somebody wanted to do that shortcut coming off of, uh, 200, right there at Delano Store, shooting across, they're going to be down even further, almost two miles down in that bottom before they find out. Because they've got, um, uh, Mount Olive Road, which then turns into Brown Store Road, they got that sign real well, and then they've got the signage down on Shiloh. And also, we, while whoever's down, and look at the arrows, looks like me, they got the arrows going the wrong way. Like not doing an arrow like this way to go for a detour or whatever, so. Some of them got it going straight ahead when to me it should be angulated or whatever. And the last one is that wonderful spot on 200 that you mentioned about the dip. Uh, that is getting worse. You can feel it riding down now.
Oh, yeah.
And you can even see some cracking in the pavement, and as you know, on that shoulder, it's even, it's down like that.
Yeah, again, we, uh, the, the right of entry stuff and, and all that is, is, has been done, so hopefully they'll move from, be able to move, go from Moon Glow down to that, that spot. Got you. Take care of that.
Yeah, because I saw they put grass there today coming up, so. I mean, they seeded it anyway.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Well, I know some people are getting concerned about that.
We, we, we keep a good eye on it.
We're good. Every time you get, every time you get a good rain, you can feel a little bit more settling. Go ahead, Ronnie.
Oh, you seeing border stop signs like this down here recently? I know I called you about some, couple weeks ago.
Yeah, a lot of it, and it was like they just pull them right up. Either that or.
Yeah, I tell you, this was three right in a close area that, like back around Christmas that I talked to a victim. Nine on one sign went with them, too.
Yeah.
Is it fine for that?
Somebody.
I guess it'd be, if I see somebody doing it, I don't know.
It's, it, I think that might be destruction of, or removal of public property, 182138, I think, might apply. Not damaging it, that's, that's the different piece.
Marcy might apply, it's just moving from one point to the other, you're depriving them.
Yeah. If it's, if it's not a violation of law, it should be.
What did you say, sir?
Marcy might apply. You're going to have to keep it, you just have to deprive the victim of their property by moving it. But that could apply.
And we know how accurate GPS is around here. At least what you got, a sign, be it 911, or y'all sign, people look for those and they can't find it, it's laying in the ditch or it's somewhere else.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is an update from Northumberland County Schools. Taraboo?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Dr. Worga was unable to be here this evening because she had a dinner to attend for, um, agribusiness in Richmond, but Jeff Brand and I are here, and we're happy to be here with you. We hope you've had a happy new year, a good start. Um, I would like to begin by sharing the superintendent's highlights with you. On page one, last Saturday, Cameron Seldon played in the 23rd edition of the All-American Bowl. As you know, he has committed to the University of Texas, and we're very proud of him. On page two, you will see that last week we celebrated Ms. Kiva Parker as the school board named her the Division Teacher of the Year. Ms. Parker, as you know, is the Health and PE teacher at Northumberland High School. On page three, you'll see that we welcomed a new PACE instructor, Ms. Tara Belden. She joined our team after Ms. Tammy Wilkins retired. And on, um, I think I got off my pages. On page four, the next page there, you'll see, um, our academic and athletic construction project is moving along quickly. Conamara worked throughout the holidays, and we are very happy with their progress. At the school board meeting Monday night, they reviewed the input from the survey, the budget input survey, and they have scheduled a budget work session for this Tuesday, January 17th, at 10:30 a.m. You're welcome to review the following items on the rest of those pages. Although that concludes the highlights from the schools, I'd like to take a few moments to share with you some information about the bus garage roof that will explain why we would like to respectfully request that you amend or rescind the motion that you made at your November board meeting pertaining to that roof repair. We have spoken with legal counsel, and our attorney has shared a letter for us to send to the roofing company. I would like to read an excerpt from that letter. "On Monday, the roofing company informed Northumberland Schools that it would not install the roofing described in its proposal. Because the company failed to satisfy its agreement to provide the services described in Exhibit A for the amount quoted in Exhibit A, Northumberland Schools hereby terminates any agreement that is or has, that it has or may have had with the company with respect to replacing the roof at the Northumberland County Bus Garage. The condition of the roof has continued to deteriorate, and water now leaks into the electrical system. While replacement of the roof was urgent prior to this deterioration, the current leaking has created an emergency that requires the contract to be awarded immediately and repairs to begin immediately. Accordingly, Northumberland Schools will award the contract as appropriate and necessary given that emergency. Northumberland Schools appreciates the company's effort to submit a quotation for the project." At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Jeffrey Brand to share some additional information with you about the bus garage roof.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Appreciate an opportunity to talk about this. Monday, the roofing company that we're speaking of started the construction process. They came down at, uh, 0800, or 8:00 a.m. in the morning on Monday. I got a call from the Director of Transportation that they had set up on the Avalon School Building and proceeded to start demolition of the metal roof on that facility. As everyone knows, that's not the facility that, uh, we wanted the new roof on. I went back, looked at the contract after we put a stop to work. They did not do any damage to the Avalon Building, nothing was ripped off of the roof. Just to verify that we had done everything on our side, and the contract did state that it was for the bus garage, and, um, with that being said, with the six-foot center steel beams in the roof for support, the stand and seam application that they brought, they proceeded to say, well, we can't do this on this facility. Out of the three bids that we got, this was the only company that, uh, we did not see on site. I asked them, I said, now, when you came on site, did you speak with a representative? And they proceeded to tell me, well, we looked at a, um, Google map image, and we justified the square footage off of that with a, some sort of program that they use. The other two sites, I, other two companies, we walked on site with them ourselves, uh, they got a bird's eye view, we all went up on the roof. I feel very comfortable that these other companies could do this job properly. Is there any questions about?
Any board members have any questions?
What, what company you would like to go with?
I personally think Colonial Roofing would be the best option. They want to use the TPO application with the ISO backing board, just like they did at our elementary school. With the square footage of that building, we had zero issues with the project that they took on there. They did, they did a phenomenal job, and, uh, I would recommend that we go with them. That's the same application they quoted for the proposal for the bus shop.
How much difference in price?
It's around $6,000 difference. They're $6,000 due to the cost of, uh, using the TPO rubber roof material.
I see here they have a manufacturer's warranty of 15 years.
Is that the one for the TPO?
TPO.
Yeah, I think that is correct.
Yeah, Colonial, Colonial Roofing. Any other board members have any questions for Mr. Brand?
I think the other metal roof was guaranteed, what, for 50 years? 40 years, 50 years, something like 30?
They can't do it, I don't care how much guarantee they got.
Yeah, I know, I, I know it's a big difference. It can't be done.
Um, Mr. Haney, the company Colonial Roofing also stated they could have all materials on site in two weeks, and they could start work two weeks after that.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Brand?
I wonder, Eric, is there anything we have to do, Eric, to?
Uh, I wanted to see what the language of that original motion was, uh, and it would require force of supplemental appropriation to cover the difference in the contract. That could be done at a later date, I suppose, and I presume that, uh, the school board will make the finding necessary to award the contract on an emergency basis and proceed under that code section, I'm sure. Uh, um, your legal counsel can, can help you all with that. I have every confidence. I believe that the board would probably need to rescind that motion, but I want to make sure we take a look at that real quick, just to make sure we do it right. but I want to make sure we take a look at that real quick, just to make sure we do it right.
What has been uh, their response to stoppage and all like that?
So the company that came on site, the ones that were awarded the contract, they said they would price match what other companies were offering in TPO because I got a call from them that afternoon stating that they could do a TPO application with the ISO board back and, uh, but they wanted copies of the other quotes. Um, I didn't give them copies actually, I didn't feel I was obligated to do so.
So is, is the county, is the county contract? Okay, so, um, let me just borrow this real quick. Um, thank you, Mr. Brand. So, members of the board, Mr. Mr. Haney, the uh, the motion was to move forward with Twin Rivers Roofing and Construction on the repair of the roof on the school division's bus garage in the amount of eighty-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. So yeah, yes, I would recommend uh, that you, the board rescind that motion uh, from the the board meeting on uh, when was that? Sorry?
November tenth.
November tenth. Um, and then you could, uh, there could, you could entertain another motion to approve um, this recommendation with the funding necessary. I don't know what exactly that is, I guess I could do the math, ninety-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five.
That's, I think that's it.
Thereabouts.
Yeah.
All right, I believe that we rescind the motion of November tenth. The amount, oh, I think it was November tenth you said.
Yes, sir.
That's concerning the roof.
All right, I got a motion in second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now.
Thank you.
You want to do a motion?
A motion to approve, what was the amount, nine, nine and one?
It was ninety-one thousand, uh, Mr. Basie, you have the exact.
It was not, it would be ninety-one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
It wasn't exactly six thousand, it was a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was around about.
Yeah, I figured it couldn't be.
What I could do in my head.
You said, what's the amount, ninety-one thousand?
I'm trying to find it.
Is it ninety-one thousand seven fifty?
Seven hundred and fifty, that I got here.
That sounds right.
Yeah.
All right. All right, I got a motion, do I have second?
Second.
All right, a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go, Mr. Brand.
Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman. Yes. So the board knows, we had um, approved up to a hundred thousand dollars in the CIP uh, to cover that. So we, we're good on the, as far as the cost is associated with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation, thank you.
All right, any board member, hold on a second, Ms. Booth, any board members have any questions for, for, for Ms. Booth? If not?
Hold on, I've got a question. Um, one of the things we got on supplemental appropriation requests for the schools, one of the documents is the amounts of remaining funds of the ESRS and those things. There's a bill that's been filed on the General Assembly, House Bill two-two-six-nine. It's gonna, it, now, it requires any local school division as of March the first uh, this year that has available and unspent federal funds, ESRS funds exceeding five thousand, or state set aside S R G E E R funds awarded by local subdivisions to pay it back by March the fifteenth of this year. What, that's a bill you need to find out the implications. Uh, I'm not saying it's gonna pass, but obviously it's, it would push you to, cause I'm looking at, like I said, I'm not, oh, it's a very, I haven't pulled the whole bill, if this is just a summary, but it could impact your funds, which, with a real quick math, which I'm not that quick or good. It looks like, oh, we got over two and a quarter million dollars that, depends upon how the, the fine wording could be at risk.
I will look into that, thank you.
So just let Holly know too, cause that's.
Absolutely.
They, you know, the state, if they can get their hands on local money, they'll do it. And they can pay for it, they call it unfunded and we'll take what you got.
Thank you for bringing that up.
No problem, it's one of that, one of those bills that caught my attention.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. All right. Next item on the agenda is, is the county administrator's report.
Yes, sir, for um, permits, building permit to report, December of twenty twenty-two, we had six new structures. Total construction cost of four point three million dollars. Total construction cost year to date is about sixty million dollars, which puts us up about five million dollars above this time last year. Mr. McKenzie is also working on the end of the year reports, so we'll have some additional numbers for the board as we go forward. Next item I have is I need a supplemental appropriation of thirty-five thousand dollars to line item eighty-one oh five, eighty-five oh three uh, for the ARPA tourism funds. We did receive that, um, those funds uh, in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. What they do is, uh, they'll pay half of it upfront and then as we work on the project, we'll have to request the additional, uh, or the remaining funds of that.
I so move.
Second. All right, got a motion in second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next item I have is the sheriff had two vehicles that were classified as a total loss and we did receive uh, forty-eight thousand six hundred seven dollars and ten cent. Received a request to purchase a replacement patrol vehicle uh, in the amount of forty-two thousand four eighty-two ten cent. Uh, if the board wishes, I need the board to first approve the sheriff to purchase the twenty twenty-three Ford Explorer in the amount of forty-two thousand four eighty-two and ten cent. And then, uh, I would need the, a second motion for the supplemental appropriation of the forty-eight thousand six oh seven ten cent.
I move.
All right, got a motion in the second, any other discussion?
The vehicle is going to cost forty-two, is that what I heard? What's the forty-eight for?
That's the total amount that was for the two vehicles, uh, for the total loss um, that we received, uh, for the, the monies, the insurance monies. Um, so what we're doing is putting that total amount in the capital improvement vehicle.
Okay, you're putting the funds over here, but you're spending forty-two, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure we wouldn't spend forty-eight thousand for a forty-two thousand dollar car.
No, sir.
Just making sure.
That's why I wanted two, two separate motions on that, so that we were clarifying what the cost of the patrol vehicle is and then um, we're putting a supplemental appropriation in that amount and that would just sit in that, that line item.
I move that we move forward with purchasing the vehicle at forty-two and change.
All right, we got one motion on the floor.
Whatever.
All right. All right, we got a motion on the floor. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move that we take the rest and put it in the CIP.
All right, I got a motion in the second.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item is um, is request for supplemental appropriation by the school division. However, due to the amount, we would need to do a budget amendment on this. Uh, so what I would ask the board to do is if I could get a motion to advertise this for the uh, meeting next month.
We'll move. Second. All right, we got a motion, excuse me, got a motion in the second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is I need the board to approve retroactively to January seventh, the appointment of Ethan Harding as interim chief of the Department of Emergency Services, which would include that stipend of the one thousand two hundred dollars uh, plus the stipend for the shift lead.
So move.
Second. All right, we got a motion in the second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's been some concern regarding the uh, term of loaded firearms as described in the Department of Wildlife Resources Guide. Uh, game warden, uh, from what I understand, this season has been providing some warnings to some hunt clubs and individuals. Um, and also in our ordinance, I think there is a code section that has been um, repealed and I do need to get with the county attorney to figure out some of that language. But I didn't know how the board would like to proceed on that, on this matter.
Well, I looked up that code section was repealed in twenty twenty-four, if I remember right. So it's been repealed a while ago.
Two thousand four.
So, obviously it's kind of hard to enforce a law that doesn't exist. So I would move that we, you got to have a public hearing to repeal an ordinance. So I would move that we have a public hearing of both the repeal of the bill and at the same time, if there's any possible other code section that could be put in place, if that's what the board wants to do that too.
Second. All right, I got a motion in the second, any other discussion? You did say, you said two thousand twenty-four should be two thousand four.
Two thousand and four, yeah. Yeah, it's been off the books for eighteen years.
All right.
Well, that's why I said, it was a different interpretation this year, it came from the game wardens and spoke to Commonwealth's Attorney's Office because Northumberland has always had it as long as you didn't have a shell in the chamber. Wasn't considered a loaded gun. Dee Hudnall did many years ago, made a presentation before this board. Who I was on the board, that it was not a loaded gun with one, if it wasn't in the chamber, you could have them underneath in the magazine or the clip or whatever. And that's what everybody's gone, boy, that's what the game wards have been enforcing. Now, all of a sudden, I don't know, let's check up, this law was changed, the wording of it?
It's, it's.
Or they just started interpreting.
It's repealed. The law doesn't exist. Regardless of in the chamber or not, this, with that repeal, unless there's a replacement somewhere else, they can have a loaded gun on their vehicle. It's bad or indifferent, I mean, that's. Cause if you search eighteen point two two eighty-seven, it says right beside it repealed. Well, interpretation means nothing, it's not there. Sheriff couldn't write a ticket on that.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
So I, I guess just clarification on that motion, are you looking at replacing that with fifteen point two, nine fifteen point two? Um, and have a public hearing on that in the event that we want to replace that, but then uh, leave the option open to repeal that.
Well, I, I think we need repeal that anyway.
Well, not necessarily, uh, you could just amend the ordinance uh, to.
Well, we still have to have.
Assuming it, assuming it's a like for like, for, for all intents and purposes, because fifteen point two, nine one five point two, I believe, still authorizes the county to adopt a similar type ordinance. So we'll take a look and if it's a matter of repeal or replace, we'll recommend.
Whichever is easiest to, one, we've got, we can't use that as enabling legislation, cause that doesn't exist.
Uh, yes.
Whether that, you can substitute, that's fine, but you still have to have a public hearing to decide whether that wants to do anyway, but it's.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And when are we planning on, how soon can we have a public hearing? The reason I'm saying that we need to really get that information out to the community, where a lot of hunt clubs can be here, if they have any questions, everything.
Well, we, we would want to do that as soon as possible and I'll certainly get with um, Mr. Gregory on that. Uh, it's my understanding that if we do that now, uh, in the February, March timeframe, that would still meet the timeframe in which we need to get that to Department of Wildlife Resources uh, for them to update their guidebook and, and everything, so, for the, the next tonic season.
All right, and also, when you look at it, Mr. Gregory, see if we can have any definition of a loaded firearm to be consistent to, if it's not spelled out in code. So we don't have a gray area of what's loaded or not, regardless of what's done.
Yes, sir.
All right, everyone ready? All right. All right, next item I have is, is information in your um, board docs and it's just the bid packet, a draft bid packet for the EVB roof. I don't need any action on that tonight as we just received that. Uh, just wanted to get that out to the board for your information and we can talk about that at a, a future meeting. Um, also in board docs, uh, the board had discussed the mutual aid agreements and I talked to interim chief, um, Ethan Harding about the mutual aid agreements that we had on file and those have been uploaded to your, your board docs. I'm not sure if any particular action is needed, I know we have taken action on Northumberland's um, mutual aid agreement, but I'm not sure if any of the other ones had taken place.
Doesn't, doesn't show it because in Northumberland, you signed off on it, it's, the other one is just, it's former chief.
Right.
I would move we ratify just to be consistent with Northumberland's. It ain't gonna hurt, but.
No, it won't hurt a thing.
Then you don't have a possible question either.
All right. That's your motion?
My motion.
Jim, you second that? All right, got a motion in second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Last item I have is uh, related to the twenty twenty-three projects. Uh, of course, we're continuing to work on the capital improvement plan. Broadband, we're certainly working on the regional project and we also have a franchise agreement that we'll need to look at with Breeze Line. Also, the old EVB roof, old sheriff's office building, sanitary district upgrades, evaluate other building and facility needs, uh, the emergency radio system, next generation nine one one. Uh, comprehensive plan is under its five-year review. Opioid settlement monies, uh, ERP software, financial and operations software upgrades, uh, budgeting and capital improvement, software upgrades, website upgrades related to GIS and of course, as always, we're following General Assembly, uh, various bills. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Tyler, I, I'd like for you to add one thing to that list. Uh, the old courthouse, the floors in the old courthouse. Check the floors out on that. I think Curtis done a fantastic job as far as the front door and everything, so just want to let him know that, that was a good job. But I'd like for you to add the floors for the old courthouse.
Okay.
I think we need to look at the whole building. Some of it needs to be pressure washed, some of it needs to be painted. Those floors, is there any possible asbestos in those things?
Don't know.
Uh, that's no thing you know when you got old buildings and that's old, we know how old that is.
Yeah.
I've got asbestos all over that building and they're running the pipes.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
As long as you don't disturb it, it's okay, but if you're gonna do the floors and it's asbestos, we, yeah.
Yeah, let me just check. We have to do some checking. Do some checking and kind of decide what our plans are over there. Cause it, cause that building needs a lot of work. Anything else?
Find out how much it would cost, then you may have to make another decision.
Yes. All right, Ted Locke, you have anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, our next item would be board supervisor items and the first one on that is board comments. Long, I'll start with you. Yes, uh, Mr. Ted Locke, how is the old school board office, how are we doing on that?
I know we finalized uh, everything that we need, um, I guess it's a matter of getting that, that deed recorded. So that, that's kind of where we're at, at this point, but we've gotten all the action that we needed from the board of supervisors.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Brand?
This is Mr. Long, read my mind. Again, on the old school board office, need to go around that building and pick up the trash. It's got yellow caution tape out there where it was blocking off the parking lot that's laid out on the ground. It's an old mailbox, it's trash all around the building, and if we're going to continue to let the public use it as a parking area, we need to fix the potholes.
They've gotten a little deep.
Yeah. And they need to be, that needs to be done sooner than late.
All right, anything else?
That's all I got.
Mr. Tomlin?
Got nothing.
Mr. Jett? All right, I don't have anything. All right, our next item would be approval of a check register, and I hope everybody's had time to review the check register.
Yes.
All right, if you have, I'll take and entertain a motion.
I move that we approve.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item, I will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
I move we go into closed meeting with Mr. Tadlock, reading the specific criteria to go in.
Sure, I need a motion from the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors to convene a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3711A1, for the discussion and consideration of personnel matters, Section 2.2-3711A7, consultation with legal counsel, and Section 2.2-3711AA29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers and discussion of the terms, or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting is necessary of the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county attorney, because they are deemed necessary, and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA Section 2.2-3712F.
Thank you.
All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to convene in a closed meeting. We'll be going next door, and we'll be back shortly. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed meeting.
I move.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, will you give us a proper language?
Yes, sir. I need the motion from the Northumberland Board of Supervisors to return to public meeting and certified by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, got a motion, second. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll have roll call. We'll start with Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Tomlin?
Aye.
Mr. Jett?
Aye.
Mr. Haney, aye. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight that's here for the seven o'clock meeting. Our first item on the agenda is the public comment period. You can please come up, state your name and address, and talk about anything you want, except our public items that we have on, except our public hearings tonight. You'll be given a four-minute time, time limit.
Name is Maurice Johnson, 451 Timberline Drive. I've been doing some research lately, and I found a rabbit hole that doesn't look good, so I figured I'd share it with you guys. Here in the Northern Neck, it appears that the rights of pretrial detainees at the Northern Neck Regional Jail are being violated, specifically their Fifth, Eighth, and Fourteenth Amendment rights. In short, what those amendments mean is that a pretrial detainee cannot be punished. It's just the way the Constitution works. And yet, across the nation, our Northern Neck Regional Jail is being exposed as a gulag of sorts, a place of torture and fear in the way it's handling the detainees that they have, and the convicted prisoners, but we'll save that for a different discussion. We see in news articles locally and across the country that this is willful behavior on the Northern Neck Regional Jail's part, with a total disregard for detainees' rights. They mete out punishment of detainees in what appears to be an arbitrary process, though we can also see where punishment is motivated through political differences between staff and detainees. Reported punishments of these detainees include, without limit, being forced to participate in what is nothing short of Fight Club, resulting in injury often, physical assault by guards. The NNA leadership, or NNRJ leadership, is directing these assaults, contaminated food and water, gray and black, denial of necessary medical attention, solitary isolation for prolonged periods of time. As far as we can tell, from publicly available information, there is no evidence of appropriate constitutionally required treatment. An email exchange between detainees' attorneys and NNRJ staff clearly shows the staff unabashedly declares there is no difference between a convicted prisoner and a pretrial detainee's rights. Anyone with this position in mind needs to be removed from that position. Further, as reported via news media, on multiple occasions, discovery paperwork for these same detainees' trials has shown up missing, paperwork that the staff had much more access to than the detainees. It isn't looking good. I've heard some people say, well, this stuff happens all the time and everywhere. Well, that might be true, but this is the Northern Neck. We can't fix the country. But we don't have to tolerate this stuff right here. Not wanting to make waves, convicted prisoners generally don't speak out too terribly loud. They're less likely to speak out for a lot of obvious reasons, I would hope, but again, that's not my point this evening. But if it wasn't for the detainees that are speaking out, this problem wouldn't be known, and it would carry on in the dark. The good news is that the national news media is paying attention to the Northern Neck Regional Jail, and maybe through that practice, we might be able to see some good and positive changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. All right, the next person on the list is Ron Nelson.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name's Ron Nelson, and I wanted to address a matter involving the Northern Neck Regional Jail that concerns members of this board who are also members of the supervisory board of the jail. As you know, there are a number of prisoners there who are being held suspected of involvement in January sixth demonstration at the National Capitol. I'm a member of the Northern Neck Patriots, and we hold a Friday evening prayer vigil at the jail to pray for the J Sixers held there, and the other prisoners, and the staff of the jail. During some of these vigils, I have heard from some J Sixers by telephone, their eyewitness firsthand accounts of disgusting and filthy conditions of the food the prisoners are served. They're served rotten and spoiled food, and must use filthy, unsanitary serving trays. When the jail board is asked about these conditions, the chairman has said that these complaints are investigated, and the board has advised whether the complaints are well-founded or not, or without merit. Apparently, the jail board just accepts the word of the jail management on the, on the status of those complaints. I urge the members of this board of supervisors, who also serve on the jail board, to not be satisfied with taking the word of the jail management that the complaints are without merit, but to require a detailed chronological written report from an uninterested third-party investigator, signed by the investigators, to validate the report's findings. This will help to ensure that valid complaints are identified, and that NNRJ board can take action to address them. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next person is Jennifer Packett.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Packett. As most of you know, I have literally been involved serving the citizens of Northumberland County for almost forty-four years. My father, Thomas Bowie Neal, was chief of Cali Volunteer Fire Department and the captain of Northumberland County Sheriff's Office until his passing in two thousand. The reason I'm here tonight is to show my opposition and bring awareness to the citizens of something that was trying to be done. We all know that volunteerism is fading across the country, and I've been volunteering with Northumberland Department of Emergency Services since February of 2018. And on December first of 2015, a volunteer roster was made for Northumberland Emergency Services. I, along with four others that I know of, was placed on this roster, two of which are board members. I've helped fill in shifts if someone was to get sick and they needed immediate coverage. I filled in shifts when no other part-time staff was available. I also respond to calls to assist. There was recently a call near my residence, and the medics were calling for assistance with CPR. I immediately went. With my assistance, we were able to revive this patient. I believe that the board members recently asked the county attorney to check into a county employee working for another department of the county due to short staffing at several departments in the county. On Wednesday, it was brought to my attention that an email was sent to the county department head stating that the employee would be entitled to overtime compensation for any hours over forty. Other localities allow it, however, I would like to be paid and work part-time, but I've come to terms that I still want to serve the citizens of my county without getting paid. On Friday, it was brought to my attention that I was the topic of a discussion in the email, and I was not included. In this email, it stated that I should not volunteer for Northumberland Department of Service, Emergency Services, due to them needing me to pay me overtime. This is my passion and has been my entire life. My life revolves around my job at Northumberland County Sheriff's Office, volunteering for Cali Volunteer Fire Department, and Northumberland Department of Emergency Services. When Sheriff Beecham was elected the sheriff, I made a promise to him that I would stay at the sheriff's office for his tenure. If I hadn't made this promise to him, I probably would have walked out on him on Friday. On Monday, I received an email from the interim chief that stated I could not run anymore for Northumberland Emergency Services after Lutzler received a notice that I had ran calls over the weekend. I was not notified until Monday that I could not run. Mr. Brand, I have volunteered to help your family in the past, and Mr. Haney, I have personally helped you when you were sick. My point tonight is, why would you try to stop someone from volunteering to serve their community? I have spoken to many people since Friday in regards to this. In reality, when I would fill in shifts, I actually saved you money from paying someone with mandatory overtime. In the future, when fire services has to go paid, this will affect numerous people as we work for county positions and volunteer on other departments. My life revolves around public safety. I would prefer to serve citizens of my county by being allowed to continue to volunteer with Northumberland Department of Emergency Services. After speaking with the county attorney and county administrator, I would like for the board to ensure me that I will be reinstated to run as a volunteer with Northumberland Department of Emergency Services. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next person on the list.
Did I say something? I have a problem, please.
Yes.
Just to be sure, but I do have a question. Mr. Tomlin, how long you been volunteering?
Eleven years.
Mr. Brand?
Thirty-five.
Mr. Jett?
Thirty-five.
I've been volunteering for thirty-eight. I ask you why you do this for all these years? Is it not for the money, especially not for the recognition? I think if you ask any of these volunteers in this room why they do it, it's because the love we have for the county and the passion and willingness we have to serve and protect the citizens that live in this county. This volunteer thing isn't for everyone, and our rosters are living proof of that these days. But the ones that do volunteer day in and day out are the most, are mostly part dedicated lifetime members, including Jennifer Packett. No matter what tone goes off for our rescue, Jennifer's always there to help, no matter of the need. Don't get me wrong, I feel the paid medics are a wonderful thing that we have added to this county for advanced life support. But it's a plenty of times that two, two people just isn't enough to care for a critical patient. It's people like Jennifer Packett that answer the call, no matter the time of night, when extra help is needed. Jennifer Packett is one of the most passionate, currently dedicated individuals to North umberland County that I know. Her family has served the county for many years, and I can say with confidence her daddy would be very proud of her accomplishments and dedication that she has for the citizens of this county. People like her don't come along every day, and in these times we are living in now, the county as a whole cannot afford to deny people like Jennifer the opportunity to volunteer for nothing but out of the goodness of her heart. I am asking, along with the brothers and sisters of the Cali Volunteer Department, that you find a way to allow people like Jennifer, whether county employees or not, to continue to do what they passionate, are passionate about, serving and protecting the citizens of this great county. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. All right, next person is Don, excuse me, is Don Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Don Johnson, 248 Osprey Nest Lane, Ophelia, or Eastville, Virginia, 22473. I'm here to talk about the Northern Neck Jail, which services Northumberland and three other counties. For simplicity, I'll just call it our jail. Our jail touts itself as one of the top three jails in the Commonwealth for financial performance. Our jail is so efficient that it does not collect a single dollar from the member jurisdictions. Our jail is free to the taxpayers of the county. Our jail receives most of its funding from the U.S. Marshals Service for housing federal inmates. Over the past two years, our jail has been housing citizens who were charged on the January sixth, 2021 Capitol demonstrations. We call them J Sixers. These are pretrial detainees, some of whom have been held as, for as many as seven hundred days. Pretrial detainees should not be housed and co-mingled with convicted felons. These J Sixers have exposed how poorly prisoners in general are treated at our jail. They face retaliation for speaking out against a system that stifles troublemakers. Why are they so vocal? Because J Sixers are not career criminals trying to quietly do their time. J Sixers have nothing to lose for speaking their truth. If you're in jail for a violent crime, you don't want to make things worse by complaining. If you're held in a pretrial detention for trespassing for over six hundred days, with limited access to your attorney, abusive tactics meant to break your spirit, inedible spoiled food, without basic rights afforded to human beings such as sunshine, health care, or religious services, you have nothing to lose from speaking out, other than being thrown into solitary confinement or having your phone privileges taken away on Christmas, which actually happened. They've told us our jail is the worst of all the jails they've been to, and there's over twenty that we've had our J Sixers have been, have been housed, even worse than the D.C. jail. They told us how the food served in our jail is often spoiled and otherwise not fit to eat. They told us that request forms, the only way they communicate with jail management and are sometimes not available. When they are, it can take up to a month for an answer. They've told us much worse, which several of you heard at the jail board meeting last Wednesday, January fourth. A letter was read from the wife of an inmate who recounts her husband's description of being beaten so badly at our jail that he needed to be taken to an emergency room. It wasn't a gang fight. It wasn't a gang fight or a dispute between inmates. Allegedly, it was guards who did this under direction from authority. This is already in the national news, and if proven, is not a good reflection on our jail or on our country. Our last jail board meeting was a bit tense, and more citizens attended and spoke out than in the past. Thankfully, one board member suggested that going forward, that the board should be better informed by the jail on the details of serious prisoner complaints. The idea of going behind closed doors and saying, you know, how are we going to get through this one, guys? Okay, it's not a problem. You come out, you say, no problem here, but where's the report? Where is the evaluation? Where is the investigation? Well, you can't see it, it's a personnel map. Well, if it's a personnel matter, I mean, that's one thing, but this guy is almost dead. He was revived three times. He was stabbed in the legs twice. He had his head fractured, his skull fractured. Anyway, sharing the information with the board members, I think, is a positive first step towards possibly, you know, becoming civil. As usual, on every Friday at seven P.M., the Northern Neck Patriots hold a prayer vigil at our jail. This last Friday was the anniversary of the January sixth demonstrations, two-year anniversary. A brave prisoner called us and relayed the information after we explained we had read his wife's letter about the beating at our jail board meeting. Wednesday evening, same day of the jail board meeting, they piled about, this was from this individual, Wednesday evening, same day of the jail board meeting, they piled about eighty of us into the little gym area where they searched our cells. They said, y'all can thank the J-sixers for this, so they are retaliating on us. While in the gym for an hour and a half, one of the men starts to have a seizure. So we flagged down a corrections officer who determined it wasn't a medical emergency and put him in an attorney booth where he proceeded to have a seizure. The caller told us he witnessed the chewed-up armband of the man, a rubber band like this, that he chewed on to prevent him from swallowing his tongue. And he had chewed on it to, yeah, prevent, yeah. Did you know our jail is the only jail in the Commonwealth certified as a medical facility? That was kind of a joke. I hope this brave whistleblower will be whisked off to a better facility because he had the courage to speak out to citizens who were listening. But what does that tell you about our jail? What does that tell you about our jail board? Each county has three representatives on the jail board. Do you know what is going, what is going on inside the jail? If you don't, then please make it your first priority to find out, and if you do, then my God grant you the courage to speak up and speak up. The Northern Neck Patriots, I can guarantee, will be following this to completion, and we've just taken the position it's unacceptable.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next person is Rita Johnson.
She's up.
All right, okay. All right, next person is Jason Smart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and everyone. Jason Smart, seventy-four Driftwood Court in Eastville. As a concerned citizen, I want to echo some of the concerns that we've heard here. I feel I need to speak out against, about the abuses and civil rights violations that we've been hearing about, that have reportedly been committed right here in our own backyard at the Northern Neck Regional Jail. Well, thank you, thanks to the investigative journalism work from one of our local newspapers. We've heard appalling reports that have been exposed. These include reports of beatings, incitement of violence against other inmates, like you heard, you know, from Don there just a minute ago, inadequate medical attention resulting in injuries, like you also heard there, violations of their First Amendment rights, unsanitary conditions, and the list goes on and on. It's many forms of cruel and unusual punishment. With what we're talking about here, it really doesn't matter what our personal opinions are on the events surrounding the Capitol breach that occurred on January sixth, twenty-twenty-one. The truth regarding the circumstances surrounding that event will be made known in due time. But that's not what this is about. This is about Northumberland County performing its due diligence to investigate and determine the veracity of alleged blatant abuses and civil rights violations that are reportedly being committed right here on the Northern Neck. The Northern Neck Regional Jail Board, of which several members are from Northumberland County, has a duty to investigate this and bring their findings to the attention of the appropriate state regulatory authorities so that appropriate actions can be taken. I pray that each of you who are on that board will find the courage to do your due diligence in this matter. God bless you, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smart. Next person to speak is Philip Haney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone.
Yes, sir.
Here hoping that the county will move forward and be progressive in its use of renewable energy. I hope that we will be looking to the future and be looking at putting in charging stations and working to save the bay and to protect this area for the next generation. Again, renewable energy is the future. As I look around, I see, as we go to Tappahannock, any direction that when you leave North umberland County, any direction you go, whether you go through Montross, there's solar energy. If you go up three sixty, right before you cross the bridge, there's solar energy. If you go across the Rappahannock, you'll see solar energy. So I don't think, you know, having solar energy in Northumberland County is unreasonable. If you look at the project, I just looked at the project on Broddus Flats, they have sheep out there maintaining the grass in those projects. So I think it's time for us to move forward with solar energy and set the guidelines and make this where it's acceptable for the county and acceptable for people who own property in the county to take advantage of this situation, because if Northumberland County doesn't, then all the surrounding counties will, and they will reap the benefits of having solar energy in their counties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I don't, excuse me, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, but would anybody like to speak? Come on up, sir, and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Stephen Jet. I'm here to address my concerns about the project going on that Ryan Rogers is doing.
Mr. Jet, that's a public hearing. You cannot talk about that at this time.
Talk about it in a few minutes. Stay ready to come up.
Great, thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to speak? Do we have anybody in the virtual world who would like to speak tonight? Anybody in the virtual world would like to speak? Nobody. All right. Since we don't have anyone else who wants to speak, I'm going to close the public comment All right, now we'll start our public hearings. Our first one, our first one is a carryover from our regular meeting on December the eighth. It's a request by Royal Realty LLC and owner, Estera Warwick. Is anyone here tonight representing? Would you come on up, ma'am, please? Would you kind of, you know, state your name, tell us what your ideas are, what you want to do with that piece of property?
Sure. My name is Estera Warwick. I represent Royal Realty, and I would like to build a dwelling on my property so we can enjoy the view on weekends.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Anything else? All right. Any board members have any comments? I mean, any questions for Ms. Warwick?
Why was this one carried over? Was this one nobody was here to represent?
Nobody was here. Yeah.
I wouldn't know why I have to be here, so.
That's fine.
Nobody was here, and we had the public hearing on to.
That's what I was thinking of.
All right.
What's your name again, ma'am?
My name is Estera Warwick.
She's the applicant.
Yep, she's. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, have a great evening.
All right, we've had the public hearing, so the matter's before the board. All right, since that's in my district down there, no, it's in your district, Jimmy, unless you want to.
I don't think we're where it is. We have a motion.
I moved, we approved the permit with the conditions, but I'd like to put the conditions to be read.
All right, I'll second that.
The suggested condition if approved are that all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies.
All right, we've got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Warwick? It passes, so you have your application. Thank you, ma'am.
Build it within the area of RPA.
All right, our next item is a carryover from last month's meeting, December the eighth meeting, requested by Philip Haney III and Judith Haney and Philip Haney and Community Power Group for a solar energy facility. All right, we've had a public hearing, so the matter's before the board.
I moved that we passed this request.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Eric, I counted. You've reviewed the site agreement and made the revisions that we discussed in it.
Yes, sir. The site agreement, I believe, is good to go. That's the next item on the agenda, but this is just the zoning approval. And in working with the applicants and county staff, we have some suggested, thank you, have some suggested conditions that Philip is ready to share, and so that's what's in your packet as well, should be anyway. So with that, Phil, you want to share the conditions? Or you want me to?
Yeah, I'll do it. So suggested conditions if approved would be that Community Power, this is just an introduction, Community Power Group has applied to Northumberland County, Virginia for a conditional use permit to construct a solar photovoltaic electric generating facility. The CUP allows for the construction and operation of the project on tax parcels thirty-seven-one, one-nine-five, and one-nine-five-A. The CUP, including any approved plans and the conditions, shall run with the land and shall not be affected by a change in ownership of the applicant or the project. Condition number one, the conditional use permit shall expire on January twelfth, twenty-twenty-seven, if no construction is taken place in accordance with the plans for which use was granted. Two, all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to stormwater plan review approvals from the Department of Environmental Quality. Number three, a siting agreement shall be agreed upon and executed between the solar facility operator and the county. At the end of the siting agreement's term, the county and the solar facility owner may mutually agree to an extension of the existing agreement or to another agreement. Compliance with the siting agreement is required, and failure to make the required payments under the siting agreement will be considered a violation of the approved conditional use permit, and failure to comply may result in the county requiring the removal of the solar facility. Four, vegetative screening shall be established around the perimeter of the fence with a minimum of four-foot-high height when planted. At least seventy-five percent of the planting shall be evergreen with a continuous landscaping strip and a minimum of a twenty-five-foot width forming a continuous screen. Five, landscape plan shall be submitted by a professional landscape architect, and a surety bond shall be posted for the plantings for the life of the project to secure compliance with screening. The vegetative screening shall be planted within six months after the issuance of a building permit and shall be maintained for the life of the facility. The grass and vegetation inside the solar facility shall not exceed eighteen inches in height as approved in the emergency operations plan. A surety bond for decommissioning shall be posted by all facility owners of record prior to obtaining any necessary permits for construction of the solar project in the amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The surety bond shall be applicable to all successors, heirs, and assigns, and each property owner, heir, and assign shall be severally and jointly liable for the full amount of the surety bond. The surety bond shall be updated and filed with the county every five years, based upon an estimate of a mutually agreed-upon professional engineer licensed in the Commonwealth of Virginia, with the cost to revise the plan being borne by the facility owner and with experience in preparing decommissioning estimates for localities in the Commonwealth. The new estimate shall include any increasing or decreasing costs due to current market rates on the estimated cost of decommissioning. Eight, proof of adequate liability insurance shall be required, and a copy of the lease agreement shall be submitted to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of any building or zoning permits. A revised copy of the lease agreement shall be provided to the zoning administrator if any substantial changes to the lease agreement are made during the life of the project. Nine, the perimeter fence shall be constructed as shown on the sheet C-one-zero-one Fence Details and also shown on Exhibit One. This pro, number ten, this project shall be limited to the fenced twenty-six acres. Eleven, there shall be a two-hundred-foot setback off of the edge of the right-of-way of Fairport Road. Twelve, the landowner shall remove, relocate all tractor trailers and commercial vehicles currently parked along the private driveway adjacent to the solar facility to a screened location prior to facility operation. Thirteen, a fifteen-thousand-gallon tank shall be installed and connected to the existing Artesian well on-site before facility operation for use by the fire department. Fourteen, any on-site lighting provided for the operational phase of the solar facility shall be dark sky compliant, shielded away from adjacent properties and positioned downward to minimize light spillage onto adjacent properties. Fifteen, during construction of the solar facility, any temporary construction lighting shall be positioned downward inward and shielded to eliminate glare from all adjacent properties. Emergency and/or safety lighting shall be exempt from this construction lighting condition. Sixteen, the CUP will be binding on applicant or any successors or assigns of the project. Applicant or any successor or assign shall notify the county upon any transfer or assignment of the project within fifteen days of such transfer or assignment, providing the county with contact information for any transferee. Seventeen, if the applicant, its successor, or the property owner fails to timely decommission the solar facilities, the county shall have the right, but not the obligation, to commence decommissioning activities and shall have access to the property, access to the full amount of the decommissioning security, and the rights to the solar facility's equipment and materials on the property. That is all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crager. All right.
I have a question.
Yes.
Back to number thirteen, the fifteen-thousand-gallon water tanks were installed, and it was agreed to that a thousand-gallon pump be installed with that, but it doesn't mention it in here. Thousand-gallon per-minute pump on both surfaces, you know, pump from the tank to the trucks or whatever. Day that, like day that, too.
How long will fifteen thousand gallons last?
Yeah.
How long will fifteen thousand gallons last?
Thousand-gallon a minute pump, fifteen minutes.
That's fifteen minutes, yeah, I know, but as far as filling a truck, that's what I mean.
Eve can tell you back there.
Five truckloads.
Five truckloads.
Yeah.
Okay. And replenishing on that?
Mm-hmm.
And replenishing the water as it's being used? How many gallons per minute is that pump going to be?
But that's just a reservoir. I mean, you might not have, pump's going to be pumping back into the tank, refilling the tank the whole time, not at that rate, though. That's why your tank is actually a reservoir is what it's acting as.
I understand that. But you can pump that tank down in a few minutes, in no time.
Oh, yeah.
If you do not have enough.
If you pump fifteen-thousand gallons of water, you've used a lot of water on the volume.
You've used a lot of water, but you have to be able to replace it.
Twenty-five hundred to, what's the most?
Four thousand, three?
Four thousand.
Yeah.
Three thousand.
Three thousand gallons, so you've got five truckloads of water now about, plus it's constantly filling once you take the fresh load out.
All right. But what's your va, volume of your constantly filling pump?
Huh?
How many gallons per minute is the volume of the constantly filling pump?
I don't know. It depends what time pumps in the wind.
That's the thing right there. You don't have any pumping capacity back into the storage tank.
It's the same setup we got at the firehouses now that were ever sold. They got a artesian well pump, they pump it into the tank, and then they got the bigger pump to pump to the trucks.
Number six, grass and vegetation inside the solar facilities shall be kept, shall not exceed eighteen inches. That should say that it should not exceed eight inches.
Which one is that on solid?
And number nine, the perimeter fence, that is wildlife fence. Most of the facilities have a chain-linked fence, or they could be a vinyl fence, eight-foot Anyone else have any comments?
My comments, the same ones I've said before. I am concerned about the financial potential liability on the county during the project, especially upon any decommissioning. We've got one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand dollars. That's an estimate right now. We, you can have all the surety bonds and you want, but I know of several subdivisions this county that have supposedly had surety bonds to bring them into the state system after the requisite number of homes were completed. Those roads were not built to state specs or weren't built, and there's no surety. I don't want the county to have to pay the potential of this money. And I'm not sure, frankly, I'm not sure you can come up with conditions that would satisfy me. I have no problem with solar, but I am worried about the implications down the road. I know it's off the screen and it's a totally different area, but if you just saw the news right there, you can argue the political side of it, but they're even looking at banning gas stoves. And that's technology that's been used for years and years. Could the problem with this situation? Nobody's really done a full-blown decommissioning yet. And I just have the major concerns about end of life of this project to avoid any financial implications of this county. Because the county's getting, I, the money that we're getting through this, if it's granted, is, that's not my concern. It's not enough hardly to do anything because, you know, even once then, somebody could say that's bribery, but it's not. I just have to be concerned about the implications after I am long and God on this county, board, or maybe even life. And this is one of the biggest, long-tail projects that we're looking at. I am, I, that's what I'm concerned about. And what other counties do, that's up to them. But again, I have to protect, one, the land, the stewardship, but also the financial. I don't want twenty, thirty years from now, one-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand, if you apply any kind of rate of increase, that could be three or four cents on the real estate to pay for something that we didn't really get a whole lot for. So that's my concern. I can't, uh, and I know we've had situation in other counties, if you want to use other counties. Essex has had one there that they've had numerous fires. You can have eight inches, you can have eighteen inches, but, and you can have a fifteen-gallon tank there, but if you get fire in that grass and it's blowing a gale, that's going to go through twenty-six acres and then jump potentially somewhere else, and some other property will be involved. The waterfront piece, that's just life. I'm not in, really about zoning. Zoning means nothing to me. It's the distance from the water. This one's flat in comparison to some of the others, like the one in Essex adjoining Muddy Creek, and they made it muddier. So I'm concerned about basically the financial implications on projects, uh, we have not seen it. I mean, we just got something, but right before the last one meeting from the welding coupon about the financial implications for that, and that was an eye-opener by and of itself. So I have major concerns about the implications down the road that I cannot foresee.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Tom?
That's enough.
Anyone else have any comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
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 All right. Siting agreement?
Might as well throw that.
Next item's carryover on the, on the December the eighth, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two request is for a siting agreement. We've had a public hearing, uh, the matter's before the board. I move that we approve. All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
What do we care in a siting agreement over?
It's been carried on. We've either got, we voted down.
Still an application. Still an action item.
I mean, is a moot point now, though.
Well, true. Might as well.
Now, you could conceivably get a siting agreement and then come back for a conditional use permit at a later date. I know it's, I know, I agree, Ryan, it's a little off, but technically that can happen.
Jim made the motion to approve it.
Yeah. All right. Got a motion. Don't have a second. A second's not required. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Nay.
Nay. For the same reason.
For the same reason. All right. Motion does not pass.
Before you move to the next one, this will probably be the third time I've put this request in. I've not, I am not against solar, no. But I want someone that is in a neutral position to come and talk to us regarding solar. We can listen to the companies that want to bring solar into the co, into the county, and it's the best thing since sliced bread. We can read papers and, and talk to people from different colleges, and it's the worst thing you can have. And somewhere along the line, we got to find a happy meeting because this is not going to be the last solar facility that's going to come before this board. And we got to be able to come to a better conclusion on, on some of this. I think we need to be educated on solar. That's all I got. Well, what I would say, we did have in the conditional use conditions, in five years it would be reviewed by engineer qualified to deal with that. Frankly, any further applications, even if the county spends money, I'd like to have that same type of person come in here and look at the project and make some recommendations built upon that project to help avoid any, lessen, lessen the concerns on the tail.
Is that your motion?
I have to make a motion. That's going to cost money. I'm not going to say that. But we have a better idea. Right now, good, bad, and different, everything is coming from the applicant's side.
That's right. It's all from the applicant's side.
And we need, we, we can't, we don't have enough applications, thankfully, for solar to have a qualified engineer on staff. So we need to get independent contractors to help us. Even if we could raise our fee for solar to help cover it, I doubt you could.
But we do need some input from someone else to help us with this.
Yeah. Like fencing, as you mentioned, grass, what to do with, you know, the landscaping, stuff like that, so, yep. And maybe somebody in conjunction with that would do what Mr. Brand is suggesting.
Yep. We do need a lot of help on this. All right. Anything else?
No.
All right. We'll move on to our next public hearing tonight as a request by Rogers and Son Enterprises LLC, owner, and Ryan Rogers, applicant, for a conditional use pit, uh, permit for construction of a service station on property zone B-one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time and let me speak tonight. First and foremost, I want to, um, bring to your attention the amount of support and, I guess for lack of better words, joy and excitement that this project has brought to our community. Currently, uh, there's no place from Fleaton, uh, to Horsehead going west, or Fleaton to Wycomica going south to buy gas except, uh, the buoy or the Exxon, whatever it is in Burgess now. So people are excited about this. My main objective is to put a clean, modern-looking station, card reader only, no convenience store, uh, no, um, potential for loitering, well-lit, but, uh, as you mentioned about the solar project, uh, the nighttime lights or whatever that don't shine on people's property, uh, that's my objective. Also, uh, we got a lot of tractor-trailer traffic coming through our county, whether it's going to Omega or Loggers or whatever, and I'd like to capitalize on that and also bring more revenue to this county by having, uh, two fueling stations for, uh, large trucks where they could fuel both sides at one time, uh, high-capacity and, um, you know, get them in and out and, uh, again, be able to capitalize on some of the traffic that comes through our county now with the larger trucks. I'm willing to answer any questions. We're working with an engineer firm, uh, that got this thing drawn out. I think y'all have the papers on your desk. I have a larger scale if anybody'd like to look at it.
All right. Mr. Rogers? All right. Hold on just a second. Any board members have any questions? Questions for Mr. Rogers?
No, I think it's a good location.
Sir, thank you.
The only question I have is, any suggested conditions doesn't mention lighting shining down. You wouldn't have any problem with light, lights like the one you, we had for that previous request to have downward lighting like that?
That's exactly what I mentioned. I have no problem with that. Again, I want it as well-lit as possible for the safety of the customers, but not to, uh, violate or, or, you know, make it hard for the people that live around there.
Didn't think you did, but I just wanted to make sure, so. We can include a condition that would address that.
Yeah. That's a good idea to have something for the tractor-trailers here because it's limited, limited pumping, uh, space for the tractor-trailers.
Yes, sir. Another thing that I forgot to mention, um, on the drawing you'll see right now, I have a proposed for four, uh, charging stations, which, uh, to my, to my knowledge right now, we don't have any high-capacity charging stations for the Teslas and the other electric vehicles now. And, uh, you know, not that that will bring any more people to our county, but it'll make it more convenient for the people visiting our county and give them a better outlook on what we provide here. And, um, you know, these new charging stations, you can be in New York, come in here on vacation, and set your time up where I'm going to have my car charged at ten o'clock, uh, you know, Tuesday morning. So I think, hopefully, everything will benefit the county and, um, you know, hoping we can move forward.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rogers. All right. I will open the public hearing on this. I don't have anybody signed up on the sheet except for Mr. Rogers.
Yeah. Mr. Jet, he, he signed up on the wrong one, but he wants.
Yeah, Mr. Jet, Stephen Jet.
Yes. My name is Stephen Jet. I live on and own the property around this project, and I'm not against the project. I'm not here to, to try to stop it by any stretch. My concern, one of them was lighting. I definitely don't want lights hitting my house. I don't want to be able to see lighting because I'm a, I'm a daytime person, and at night my lights go out. So I really and truly don't want any lights hitting my house. I'm also worried it's going to be a twenty-four-seven operation. He said it's not going to be any loitering. I wouldn't be afraid to say that there could be. And you get a bunch of people together, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, chances are there will be noise. I'd love to be able to have some barrier, some noise barrier. Again, the lighting you've already addressed, but the barrier for any sort of noise, and those trucks. Um, you know, I, I like my quiet. And again, I'm not, I'm not against, I'm, I'm all for the, it's, it's a good thing. We need it because people won't go to the buoy after dark. They won't do it. So, anyway, my, my concern is, again, the sound issues. If we can get some kind of barrier that will protect my family, my, my daughter and her children, my grandchildren, and myself, we're, we're both quite close to that, that property. We, we surround that property. So I would appreciate it if there could be some sort of mediation there so that we can sleep well at night and not have loud trucks or loud people, um, like I say, and that's, I appreciate y'all hearing me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jet. Anyone else like to speak?
Hi. My name's Jennifer Lucrits. I'm in Old Fairport Road, and I just found out about this tonight when I got here, and I don't have a problem either way. My concern is with that charging station. What's that going to do to our electrical grid? What's that going to cause for our, you know, that's my only concern on, you know, us having problems and power outages and so forth. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Could I address a couple of things?
Yes, you can.
As far as her concern, uh, this is the, I wanted to get past tonight before I could really get into my research, so I honestly can't answer, uh, you know, her concern about the electrical. All I know is we're right there, close to that substation, and I know one thing, Northern Neck does a great job of not having any outages, so hopefully that won't be a problem, but that will be part of the research. As far as Mr. Jet's concerns, I appreciate him bringing that to attention, and that's, uh, that's one of my concerns, too, whether, what kind of research I can do, whether it be a fence, whether it be trees or both, uh, to dampen some of the sound, and, um, you know, it will be trucks and cars come there twenty-four-seven. But one thing, uh, that I'd like to bring to his attention that I've had on my mind, it's going to be a big area, and I invite any law enforcement at any time at a good place to sit if they want to run radar, if they want to do paperwork. So, you know, I want them to feel comfortable and be there anytime, you know, and that's going to help as far as loitering and people hanging out there as well. So just some of the things I had on my mind.
All right.
Are you going to have signs that no loitering and no trespassing unless?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That would give sheriff's office a basis to get out of somebody.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Anyone else like to speak? All right. Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? All right, anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Nobody? All right, since no one else wants to speak, I'm gonna close the public hearing and the matters before the board.
I move that we grant the request.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, second?
Read the suggested conditions.
Conditions. Philip, would you read the conditions, please?
Suggested conditions are that all required permits under licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Virginia Department of Transportation and Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. This approval shall not include the repair service of vehicles, but may possibly include a future car wash facility. And then we've added a condition for lighting and for vegetative and structural buffering.
All right. Any other comments from the board? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes, Mr. Rogers. Thank you.
Chairman, while we're talking about this subject, I would move that we send this to the planning commission to look. This is zone business. Why does a businessman need to get a conditional permit to do a business in a business zone?
Senator Plante.
That's why, it's not even, if you look at the table of uses, service stations with conditional permits are only allowed in business and agriculture. Can't even put it in industrial areas. I think that needs to be looked at. So I would move that we send to look at the appropriate table of usage application for service stations with, in my mind, toward removing conditional use, at least in...
Just there was a station there previously.
Well, it's gone, long gone, so it's... But to me, it's...
Was that shed in between the store and another house, was that a shed they worked on cars or something? That's what I thought it was. So it was actually a service they were working on a car and...
I know.
So gas and so good ice cream.
Yeah.
That's what I remember for.
It seems you can't even have, in an industrial use, you can't even have a service station. So, but just to have that whole area looked at, well, that's my motion, have it sent to the planning commission to look at the usage in the zones appropriately.
All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion, second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any other items?
Nope.
Tedlock, do we need to take action on anything that we discussed?
Not in closed meeting. Unless the board wants to look at dates.
Yeah, let's look at, uh...
Yeah, I think you put a date on that.
Let's look at a date.
Yeah, we gotta stay open, we got... What dates do y'all want to meet?
How about the seventeenth or the eighteenth?
Hold on a second, Jim.
What'd you say, Ms. Long?
How about the seventeenth or the eighteenth?
Seventeenth, what time?
Oh, depends.
Seventeenth, you gotta do it before four P.M. Start back class.
I'm open.
Okay.
Eighteenth, you can do it up till five-thirty.
I got a meeting at three.
Yeah, I can't leave at eighteen.
Which one is best for y'all, on seventeenth, eighteenth?
Seventeenth will work. Seventeenth will work. If you gotta be by four, I...
I gotta leave by four.
But then you want to work some during the day, too.
Yeah, I gotta work a little bit in the day.
What about the nineteenth, five o'clock or something like that, even a little earlier?
Nineteenth, I got, as long as I'm back by five-thirty. And I got planning commission at night, too, seven.
Well, on this, you say on the seventeenth, you had to leave by five or four?
I gotta leave by four. If I'm gonna be here, I need to leave here by four. So if you want to do it at two o'clock?
Do it at two.
Couple hours will give us plenty of time.
Don't bother me.
You know, I'll, I'll work around it best I can.
The seventeenth, right?
Is that what y'all want to do? Ron? Seventeenth, two P.M.?
What is seventeen, is that the Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yeah, make it work, yeah.
All right.
All right.
Two P.M., right?
Two P.M. All right.
That'd work, will you look?
I was just looking at the office calendar, I think...
Check with you.
Well, y'all can go ahead.
That's what I say.
No, I think that'll work. And that would strictly be a closed meeting.
Yes. Yes.
For personnel matter.
All right. So that's okay or you? All right, anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to carry over to the seventeenth then.
Go move.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank y'all, ladies and gentlemen, for coming tonight.